Very excited to get started. Same thing as last time, please enter your name just so we know who's here. Make sure to mute if you already haven't, and you can keep your cameras off until we get into the small groups. We're going to do a bunch of opportunities for you to meet with different people and talk with different groups tonight. So, as always, feel free to use the chat feature, we'll be keeping an eye on that, and we'll go ahead and get started. So, just to review the process with you, the steering committee, which is you, you provided input for the mission last week, you also provided input on the vision areas. So tonight, we're going to share with you the vision areas, and we're going to ask you to provide input on the statements. So we'll be working on the vision statements tonight. We're going to gather all that information from you tonight, again, in a survey just similar to the one we did last time, and then, you notice, we don't have a meeting next week, we're going to take some time and create some drafts, and then when we come back together, we'll have some drafts for you to give feedback on. Once you give that feedback, we'll make some edits, and then we will share the drafts with the larger community in a survey. So that's just the process. Tonight, we're going to be working on vision, and a great way to do that is, we're going to be using an article, it's a very short article, and Tom is going to put that in the chat right now, so if you'll just grab that out of the chat. What we'd like you to do is highlight quotes in the article that stand out to you, either it's something that gives you an aha, or something that affirms what you already know, or something new to you, or something maybe you have a question about. So, you're going to, we're going to do an activity, we're going to put you in groups with this, and this is how we're going to learn about vision. So, again, you're going to, we're going to give you a few minutes here to grab the article out of the chat, read it, and highlight quotes from the article that speak to you or are meaningful to you.
Just real quick, guys, folks who are doing that, hi, Jenny, it's Tom. So, if you would also, just a couple things, you're going to want to have probably something to write with, and something to write on today, because we're going to be collecting some feedback from you, giving you opportunities to jot down your own thoughts before we do some small group sharing. So, this would be a great time while you're reading the article, to grab a pen, pencil, some paper. Also, if anything goes on, you get kicked out, I'll be monitoring the waiting room, just log right back in, we'll get you right back in. And if, the last thing, and I swear I'll let you read, is if you could, in the participants' tab, just click "no" if you were not able to see or download the PDF, so I can make sure I can get that to you. Okay, I see a "no" there. I've just thrown it in the chat again.
Okay, so while we're working on the, making sure that everybody has the article, again, you're going to read the article and highlight quotes that are meaningful or speak to you, full quotes, because you're going to be sharing those quotes. Okay, we have a few of you that are having difficulty getting the article. If you haven't already, send Tom your email in the chat, you can just click on "to" and click "Tom Frye," and send your email to him, and he's emailing that to those people who are having difficulty. So we'll take a few minutes while those people gather the article, the rest of you can continue reading and highlight your quotes. Okay, I know some of you just received the articles, so if you could, in the chat, just let us know how many minutes you need to finish up, 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, or 0, just let us know, that'll give us a signal of how much time we need. Okay, we'll take about 3 more minutes here. Okay, if you are not done yet, it'll be fine, because we're going to put you in groups, and you're going to have the opportunity to hear from different people about the article, so you'll be able to work your way through it, so do not worry if you still have a little bit to go. Then I'm going to hand it over to Tom.
Thank you. So, what we want to do is, we're going to put you in small groups, as Jenny said, and we want you to have a dialogue about the article, but we want to add a structure, so that it's not just a free-for-all, and that everyone's voice gets heard. So we're going to do a process called "first turn, last turn." So how this will work is, once Jenny puts you into your rooms, you'll get an invite, you'll jump into your room, there'll be either 3 or 4 people in your groups, most of us will have 3, there's a few who'll have 4. So once we get into our groups, we're going to have to identify, everyone will need to choose a letters, we'll need an A, a B, a C, and possibly a D person. So how the process works is, if I'm Person A, I am going to start by letting everyone know one of my quotes, so I like to, just so people, especially in a remote setting, so people can read the quote that I'm selecting, as well as hearing me read it, so I'll say, "Hey, on page 2, paragraph 3, I selected this quote." So, Person A will read their quote aloud with no comment, I'm just going to read my quote, I'm not going to tell people why I selected it, what it meant to me, I'm just going to read the quote. At that point, we'll have a pause, and then what's going to happen is, Person B now will have an opportunity to comment on my quote, not choose your quotes, no, but you'll talk about hearing my quote, you'll get an opportunity to share what that makes you think. Then, without any crosstalk, Person C then will have an opportunity to also comment on Person A's quote, and if you have 4 people, then Person D would do the same thing. So then, after everyone else is commenting, now Person A gets the final opportunity, that last turn, to share why they selected their quote. So it could be for some of the same reasons that other people commented, it could be totally different. So, we'll do that, that will be 1 turn. After that has happened, now what will occur is, now Person B will have an opportunity to share their quote. Again, let folks know what page, what paragraph, what line it is, so they can find it, Person B will read their quote, no commenting, Person C now will have the first opportunity to comment on Person B's quote, and so on, and we'll work our way around the group. So we'll do this, so that everyone gets an opportunity to share at least 1 turn, sharing one of their quotes. Because some of the groups will be a little bit larger, those groups of 3, you might have an opportunity to get A, B, and C through, in everyone taking a turn, if that happens and we still have some time left, just go ahead and have Person A choose a secondary quote that they selected, and do the same thing. Who has questions about process?
So, it's a good idea to, I think, to whoever's Person A, whoever starts, to start kind of on the first page at the beginning of the article, and as you go through turns, work through the article. We, Tom and I are going to be jumping in and out, probably, you may see us jumping in and out, we'll be just there in case you have questions, and then we'll probably pop right out, so just in case you see us, just ignore us unless you need us. So I'm going to go ahead and open the rooms, remember, hang out in there, it sometimes takes people a few minutes to get in. Okay, welcome back, make sure that you are muted, and you can go ahead and turn your camera off for now, and Tom?
Yes, so what we'd like to do is, if you would, take a few moments and just type in the chat, what did you learn about vision statements, through both the article and the conversation? What did you learn about vision statements?
What stood out to you? Oh, these are good. Impactful, they need to be able to change and grow, you're going to look at the vision statements much more frequently than you will the mission.
Guiding daily work.
Of changing them. What was that, Tom?
Guiding daily work, I saw.
Motivate and resonate, should be reviewed every 2 to 3 years, it should be visual, visible daily. Short and memorable. Should have buy-in. For the vision statements, you're really going to want them to be measurable, a way that you know, is what we're doing working? Can you answer that question? Great. Yes, students should know too, students should understand and be aware of the vision and the mission as well. Yes. Great, okay. Well, we're going to talk about the vision, and we started that on, the last time we met last week, and you gave input on the vision areas, so we just wanted to share a little bit about where these came from. So, we took all of your suggestions for vision areas, and the top 4 are there on the left. Student learning, student opportunity, community, and culture. So, looking at it, since some of those could be, are very similar, we thought about bringing in what was the next tier of words, and we thought these were, the communication and financial resources, fiscal resources, is something that is a different area, and that could be a main area. So, our suggestion here is, and what we're planning on going with, is student learning, culture, communications, and financial resources. The idea is that we'll make sure that we incorporate opportunity into the statement with student learning, and community into the statement with culture, so that we capture all of your big thoughts and big ideas, but those will be the 4 that we're working on. So, I want to start, and what we're going to do is a series of quick, we'll give you time to think and jot down your notes, and then we'll put you in a group for, to share, and then, we're going to go back and forth for all 4 areas, and you'll get to meet with 4 different groups. So, first, we want you to think about, if you had to share your most important thought when you're thinking about the vision area, student learning, what would it be? Now, last week, we shared words, this week, you can share words or phrases, but I just want you to think about what in your mind stands out when you think about student learning and the vision. And then, you're going to have an opportunity to talk to people about this, and then, in the end, you'll be able to edit it and enter whatever you choose towards the end. So you're going to be honing these throughout the process. So right now, I'm just going to give you a minute to think about student learning, the vision area of student learning, and what would your words, phrases, thoughts be, what's your most important thought about that? So let's just take a minute. Okay, I'm going to have you jump into groups, and, again, it'll be a different group every time we switch, so when you get to your group, I want you to take turns, first of all, before anybody shares their thoughts, I want you to just read your statement or your phrase that came to your mind when you thought of student learning, so that you get a chance to hear everybody's before anybody comments. So once everybody's had an opportunity to hear each person's, then you can have a dialogue and maybe say, "Oh, that's interesting, I never thought about that, what did that mean?" So you'll have a little dialogue. This is going to be a short time getting into groups, we'll probably be in there, I would say, 3 to 5 minutes. I'll give you a 2-minute warning, so you know, and make sure that everybody's had an opportunity to share, so please, at the very beginning, give everybody a chance to read first, that read what they wrote down, and then have a dialogue.
Just real quickly to clarify, so this is going to be different than this last process, where one person would share, and then we'd all comment, this time, we're going to give everyone an opportunity to just take round robin, just share out the things that you, that think, the thoughts that you had, whatever your notes are, then, once everyone's shared, then you can just have a dialogue as a group about everything that you heard.
Exactly. Okay, so I'm going to open up the rooms, if you have any issues, just let us know, and "too much time," "not enough time," or "just the right amount of time," because we want to make sure that you have time to talk in the group. So, in the chat, if you could let us know, "just right," "too much," "not enough," okay, all right, cool. Okay, so, before we leave student achievement, take a note, I want you to think about what you heard, and think about your statement, because at the end, you're going to be able to enter some thoughts, a statement, a phrase for each area. So, just while you're thinking about student achievement, go ahead and jot yours down, make sure you know that it's about student achievement, and then we're going to move on to the next area. Okay, the next one we're going to consider would be culture. So I want you to think about the culture of the school district, the culture of the buildings, what is a phrase or thought that you have, that you think is most important? Go ahead and jot that down, and then we're going to put you in a different group.
And while you're thinking about this one, community was also a pretty high, so when we're thinking about culture, also be thinking about community as well.
Okay, we're going to do the same process, but you'll get to talk to different people this time, we're going to do, it was about 5 minutes, we're going to do about 5 minutes again, so I'll go ahead and open the rooms, talking about culture. Okay, great. Take a minute again, finalize your thoughts, take a minute, thoughts on culture, keep in mind that you're going to have an opportunity to enter that at the end. Okay, the next one's communication, so again, take a minute and jot down your thoughts. Okay, you're going to go to another group, you know the drill by now, and we'll be sharing communication. Open up the rooms? Okay, great, make sure you're muted, just jump back in. And I'll ask you to take a thought about what you heard, jot down what you're thinking about. jot down what you're thinking about, finalizing your thoughts, what you're going to share for your most important thought about communication. Okay. And our last area is fiscal responsibility. So when you're thinking about finances in the district, fiscal responsibility. What is the most important thought, word, phrase that comes to mind? Again, we'll take a minute here before we put you into groups, just so you have some time to think on your own. Okay, and you're going to go to your fourth and final group of the night. Going to go ahead and open those rooms, and we'll give you five minutes in here. The link in the chat for you to access the form for you to enter. It's really important, because this is where your voice is heard. We will use all of your input here to draft the vision statement. So you're going to have an opportunity to enter one for each of the four areas. So take a look at your notes that you've been taking throughout the entire time. And we're going to give you some time right now to take it, just in case, in case you have any issues, so that we can be here, because this is really important. We want to make sure you get all of your feedbacks. So go ahead and take a few minutes right now to enter your feedback, and then, if you haven't... Just a couple of things. We're going to take all the information and create the draft, missions and visions. We'll come back together on November 12th, and we'll have some drafts for you to look at and react to. And then, you'll get final input in a survey. So I don't know, Jason, did you have anything you wanted to say?
I'd just like to, once again, thank everyone for their participation tonight. I know being in all these different chat rooms, the dialogue, the conversation, and the input has been great in every single one that I've been in, and I'm sure it's that way for everyone else as well. So certainly appreciate everyone's time and commitment to our process, and we'll look forward to the next step here in a couple of weeks. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you, everybody. Have a great evening.
Thank you, everyone.